January 26, 2021. I call the village board meeting order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik?
Here.
Trustee Feiter?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Listner?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Every board member is here tonight, and tonight, for the first time in a while, we actually have an invocation. So we're going to do an invocation and a pledge allegiance. Tonight, the invocation is from Pastor Gorski of the Elk Grove Presbyterian Church. Whoever on please stand. Guest of the microphones, all yours.
Let us pray. Loving God, we thank you for our community. For it is an exceptional community. And that is because of the people that work together for your people. At this time of the winter and all that we are facing, Lord, there are so many people that we need to pray for, that we lift up to you. We think about the homeless that are out on the cold tonight. We think about those that have the coronavirus, those that are sick. We think about our children and how they're trying to go to school and be with their teachers. And we're thinking about our village leaders right here tonight. And ask that you watch over each person, that your spirit will guide them, that your spirit will lead them in the decisions they make, and that we will continue to do what's best for our people in everything we do here and in this community and beyond. We thank you, that you are a God who walks with us at times like this, and that you remain with us in all that we do and say. It's in your holy name tonight that we pray. Amen.
Amen. The flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated, Pastor. Hang on a second. So, we thank you for coming tonight, getting us going again for New Year and all that. And of course, we always have some treats for you, some nice dark chocolate village logos. And we give you plenty of extra, especially since it's dark chocolate. My heart doctor said I can eat it. So, there you go. We thank you again. We thank you for your work and do for the community, and we wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Blessings to all of you.
Thank you.
May you have a quick, brief meeting tonight.
Thank you.
From you to God, dear.
We need you to go to higher power for that.
No, no, she's right. We're going to skip all the trustees report. We'll get done very quickly to that. We move on now to the accounts payable warrant for January 26, 2021.
Should we do the minutes first?
Oh, the minutes. That was my mistake. January 12, 2021, the minutes. My apologies.
I move we accept the minutes of January 12, 2021, and dispense with the reading.
Second. We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, and second by trustee Listner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, let the record show you an ass approval. Now we move on before the accounts payable to the mayor and board of trustees report. I was overexcited because I only have a few items tonight. And we have a surprise with some young gentleman watching us. We'll get that in a second. Real quick, on January 13, we had a suburban air commission meeting, and we did renew our contract with JDA. They are the experts that have been working with us all these years to make sure that the Fly Quiet program that will be coming very soon is in the best interest of everyone around the airport, not benefit one area, not the other. We said the only way this is going to work right is if that we spread the impact around the whole airport, the impact around the airport, and the benefits around the whole airport. And JDA has done a great job. So renewed another year contract with them. Hopefully, by the end of January, it's Maggie. Hopefully Maggie by the end of January, maybe no later than February, we'll finally get the Fly Quiet rotation done, and hopefully see how it goes with implementing it. The reason I say Maggie is Maggie represents us at all the ONCC meetings, and appreciate all the work she does with that. Also, we had a meeting with Dea Nichols, Mr. Rumel and I, just updating us on everything going on with the hospital, also talking to us about the COVID and all that. They're working very hard. I think Dea had a very good analogy. Instead of unfortunate counting the deaths that have occurred at the hospital, they focus on the success, the people that are released from the hospital after beating COVID. So, it's interesting. He said the day we saw them, about a week ago, they had their 1,000th patient, am I right, Ray? Yeah. 1,000 patients have gone through the hospital and have beaten COVID. They're also going to focus again more on the name Alexian Brothers Hospital, not so much Amida Hospital. So we're excited about that, because all of us old timers remember it as Alexian Brothers, and we would like to see that name back up there. Also, Chief Michaels want to congratulate your guys. I see they're getting a special COVID badge for the uniforms. As of a couple days ago, our fire department has transported 400 COVID patients during the time the pandemic's been hitting. 400 patients. That's a lot of them. And your department's done a phenomenal job with that, Chief, and, you know, especially protecting our guys, but more importantly, also protecting them, the patients and their families. I know it's not been easy. It's been a lot of hard work. So, we want to congratulate the department on a fine job, and it's very, it's kind of a neat badge they're going to have. You can see that on Channel 6. It's really kind of neat looking on that. So, thank you, and again, for thinking ahead, by having ambulance dedicated for the COVID patients that can be easily sanitized and kept safe for everyone involved. So, thanks for a job well done. Also, a little COVID update, as people are talking, as everyone knows now, we did a robocall last night. We're in Phase 1B, which I think opened up to 3.2 million more additional people from Illinois can get the shots. Again, people need to understand, the shots and everything is set up is not by local towns. As much as mayors would love to have their hands in it, it is run by the counties themselves. So of course, here we're in Cook County. So Cook County sets everything up, they organize things. I give our county commissioners credit. I just talked Kevin Morrison, our county commissioner, last Thursday again. We've talked a couple times, and they're trying to set things organized, set up, and get as much vaccines out as possible. But as I said last time I call, if you want to get on the county list to be called, and it's really quite a wide ranging to get on there, you need to go on the county's website for it, which is, I thought it was on here. Oh, here. You go on, it's under vaccine.cookcountyil.gov. Again, it's vaccine.cookcountyil.gov. Go on there, get your name on the list, walk through, it's pretty simple to do, and you get up there. They had a location before, that's one, I know a lot of people went on before, they're supposed to transfer the information from the old one to the new one. But if you want to make extra sure, go on that. They also give you a hotline number you can call. You may want to attempt that. And their phone number is 833-308-1988. That's 833-308-1988. So you can call to try, if you don't have a computer, or you're like me, very bad with computers, that's option. The other option is, I think you can call Walgreens, CVS, Jewel, Osco. I'm trying to think if there's any one, is Marinos? Marianos, I'm sorry. Marianos. I think you can call them directly. They'll give you a website, you can go on their list. Matter of fact, we heard, I think it was one of our police officers last night at midnight, happened to go on the site and found, he had an opening, but he had to go at midnight, right? Am I right?
No, he was scheduled for today over at our Walgreens.
At our local Walgreens, but he found it, there's opening at midnight. And what happens is this, folks, remember, especially if they're using the Pfizer vaccine, when they take that out and get it ready for use, once it's defrosted out of that super cold chamber, they got so many hours to use it. If for some reason someone has an appointment, they don't show up, or for some reason they have an extra one because they open up more than they needed, they only have a short period of time to give it out. So if, you know, you're there and it's available, you may want to check. So if you're at Walgreens shopping, check and say, hey, is there any available? Sometimes they're available, and you might be able to get in there, because they got to utilize up that shot, or they throw it out, and they don't want to throw them out. So, you know, go at different times, check on the website different times, like a one officer found out, was it at midnight?
Yes.
Yeah, midnight, just happened to go on there and check, got in today. So you never know. Now obviously you got to be eligible, obviously a police officer is eligible, so, you know, or if you're over 65, a lot of ways you're eligible, work at a grocery store, a lot of things you do, but check, don't give up hope, keep going. Now I know President Biden today announced that, you know, he's ordering more COVID shots, all this, and, you know, he's saying he's hoping to have enough shots for everyone by end of summer, early fall. Our hope is it's quicker than that. But again, in the meantime, keep wearing the mask when you need to, social distance when you need to, go and get through this. Go and get through it together as a community. You know, that's why we keep the green ribbons up. We're still fighting this, still going to get through it. So hang in there, but please, get your name on the county list, go to the different drugstores, get your name on their list, and get yourself a chance to get that stuff taken care of. Also, in the very near future, we're going to be announcing a number of projects here in the village, and we'll be updating that soon. And, you know, we've been talking about the roadwork, drainage issue, all that. So keep your eyes open. We've got a lot of projects coming in for the part of 2025. Last thing I'd be done now, trustee Frankie, very quickly, except we got a special reach out that we're going to reach today.
Very important, so go ahead.
Yes, very important. You know, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, sometimes they come to board meetings, sometimes they come visit me on Thursdays when I'm at the village hall, they meet with me, ask questions, a lot of times they get tour with the fire department, they get tour with the police department, and, you know, but with COVID, it makes it more difficult. I think, Lori, we did a Girl Scout group by computer one time, we did that. But tonight, watching on TV, is the Cub Scout Pack 293 from Queen of the Rosary Church, and they're watching for the government badge, and since they really can't come in, they are watching tonight, and they sent over five quick questions with your patience, trustee Frankie, if you don't mind, five quick questions I want to answer. And they had one that would take me a long time about Mr. Knickerbocker, so I tossed it out. So that's why there's five, and, but we'll go through it. The first one is from August, so if you're watching August, his question was, when you became mayor, what was the first thing you want to do? People may not realize it was not hire Mr. Knickerbocker as a village attorney, that was like the 89th millionth, no. Honestly, August, what the first thing I want to do was, I wanted to make sure that we found as many ways possible that we open up our government to the public. So we started televising, community, the whole meetings, we started getting agendas out quicker on computers and all that, posting them on more sites so people see it. So the biggest thing I want to do is make sure our government state is open as humanly possible, not like what you see in Springfield or Washington. And we think the more open government is, the better the government is. So that was a thing I really worked hard on, and I couldn't have done it without the board members up here working as a team. We got that done. Next question. Nathan asks, are there changes coming to our local police department, like defunding? Well, I've said this, and the board says this all the time, number one, we will, I'll repeat again, we will never defund our police. If anything, we'd like to give them even more money, because our police department does an absolute phenomenal job, just like our fire department I was talking about earlier, they do a phenomenal job. And Mr. Kobe's Public Works, we had our first big snowstorm, our first six plus inch snowfall in over two years, and our streets were down to wet pavement by this afternoon when I came here at 3:30. Wet pavement. And we got most of the snow during the day today. They do a phenomenal job. So our police department, we are not going to fund, we support 120%, the men in blue do a great job, we're proud of them in Elk Grove, and we love the job they do. That's why they're Calec certified, the highest ranking you get for a police department. Our fire department just got a new high rating. Our Public Works do phenomenal. And Mr. Rumel and our management staff, we got great people. So no, you can count on our police always being there, Nathan, they're never going to let you down. Eddie asks, how does a village find the Christmas tree each year? Good question. Each year, people, we put in a newsletter, if they got a big tree, they'd like to donate to the village for the Christmas tree, to contact the village hall. And then what happens is, in the fall, and every year we have a few trees, and we go out, and Kobe and his team, we go out and look, they give us the name of the address, we go out and take a look, give the final sign off, thumbs up, and that's how I do it. So anyone out there that has a big, a lot of times it's been Bruce, Bruce's lately, and that was a big one this year, was it 40 feet this year? Huge, 40 feet. If you got a big evergreen, one thing we do look for is just so people know, that's a full tree all the way around. So if a lot of people have clump evergreens growing, you know, that was a big thing a number of years ago, if you take down one of them, it's going to be half a tree. We need full trees. We got big full trees, you want them out, we'll come out, we'll take the tree out, we'll stump it, we'll put black dirt down, and we re-sod over after it's gone. So that's the benefit you get for doing tree. So if you got a tree, so Eddie, if you know someone's got a tree, contact us, we'll take a look at it for next year. So thank you. Jake wants to know, what is your favorite part of being mayor? It's different tonight, but Ms. Murphy hears us all the time. My favorite part is working with the young people. I love when the scouts come in, or different groups come in, because they're the future of our community, folks. The young people are the future, and see how excited they are about Elk Grove, looking at different things. I love when I meet with them. So tonight's a little different, meeting them on Channel 6, but love it. So Jake, you make sure when this, we get past the pandemic, we owe your troop a visit of the police station and the fire station. We'll make sure we tear you through, and I'll make sure I come down and say hi to you when you come by too, and give you all some nice chocolate, that we always do. Final, the last question. Alex, what is the village position on a possible expansion of O'Hare Specialty Runway 9L? Well, obviously Alex knows something about the airport. So the expansion, Alex, is already happening. Yes, the village fought the expansion for 20 some years. We didn't want the kind of impact, especially the impact taking our, part of our community happen. We're successful in stopping a large part of it, but the expansion did happen. There's new runways pointing toward the village that we didn't have before, and that's why when I talked just earlier about the JDA contract, us working with all the towns, including Chicago, around the airport, to make sure the expansion happens, but in a way that minimizes the impact on the village. Remember this though, the Fly Quiet is not all day and night, it's only for the nighttime hours. So daytime, we are going to have more planes over the village in areas that never had it before, there's nothing we can do about it. We got some benefits in our fight, but we didn't stop the expansion. We still think there's, everyone would have been better off with the South Suburban Airport. Matter of fact, the flights out of O'Hare, even the expansion, won't be much more than they had before the expansion, as we always predicted. But it's happening, so Chicago is being a good neighbor now by working with us, and we want to thank them for that, and our neighboring towns, and we'll get around it. So it's happening, and hopefully, Alex, the impact won't be very severe for the community. So I want to again thank Cub Scout Pack 293 out of Queen of the Rosary for watching tonight, earn your badge, and I said before, we owe you a trip here, and we'll set that up. Ms. Murphy will do it for you as soon as the pandemic's over. Last but not least, Mr. Frankie, we have coffee with the board coming up, a week from Saturday, on Saturday, February 6, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM in room E downstairs. Remember, we started having our coffees again last August. So we had August, we had November, we're going to do it again in February. You need to wear a mask. We have the chairs up socially distanced, and it's going very well. We had nice turnouts, 35, 40 people have been coming. So we welcome you to come, anything, we always, we used to always have Dorash Donuts, but we can't now, but we do have some wrapped things and sealed bottles, little bottles of water, whatever people want. Can't do coffee unfortunately, but you're welcome to come by, we love to see people come by, we're all in the happy answer question, talk to you in an informal way, all the board will be there, and we look forward to it. So with that, I even got an applause from trustee Frankie.
That wasn't as bad as you made it out to be.
I'm learning. By the time this pandemic's over, we'll be done in two seconds up here, but we're getting there. With that said, move on trustees report. We'll start, of course, with trustee Schmidt.
Of course.
I really have no report tonight, but I just want to say from our discussion at the last board meeting about the identity theft, I got several phone calls from people saying that they were victims, or, and they had the same experience I had, or they want to know what to do. So again, if you're a victim of identity theft, please contact the Elk Grove Police Department, and they will advise you on how to get through it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And we thank Mr. Rob for the nice article that he printed. Thank you. That gets out to people.
Yes.
Trustee Prakno?
Thank you. The only thing I'd like to report, and it's not really report, it's a comment, we had six inches of snow today, probably our largest snowstorm of the year, and I was out there walking again, and I was pleasantly surprised to see how many people were out there trying to shovel their sidewalks and their driveways. And I was out fairly early, 9 o'clock in the morning, and I really appreciate the fact because the ones that weren't shoveled yet were a real bear to get through, and I had the dog with me today. And so if you're out there and you can, please shovel your sidewalks and your driveway to help the walkers and the pet walkers, and the children and the seniors who are out there walking. And if you have a neighbor who is ill, or needs, or is elderly and needs some help, perhaps you could offer to help them out with their shoveling. It wasn't too bad today, it wasn't heavy icy snow, it was fairly manageable. But that's what makes our community so exceptional, is that we care about our neighbors and we want to keep them safe. So please remember to do that. That concludes my report.
And I know some people were talking about, how come we can't shovel out every corner with the plows and all that? And I know you talked to Kobe, and can I explain?
He explained to me that some of the intersections that I was trying to cross, where it looked like the snowplow had pushed the snow right up into the sidewalk, and I'd have to climb over it, that sometimes the drivers have no choice because of the intersection possibly being a T intersection, and the truck having nowhere to go with the, with the ice and the snow. And once he explained it to me, I felt a whole lot better about it. Not better about climbing over it, but at least understanding why it is that it's happening, and that our guys are still out there doing the very best job that they can do.
And it's, it's difficult too, because, you know, people I know, they shovel the driveway, the plow comes by. But remember, we have 9,000 single family homes, add in town homes on top of it. If our truck blade, try to turn the blade in such a way to every driveway, it probably would take you guys probably a month to plow our streets, and, you know, it's just not possible. But your guys try to do a great job. I know Kobe, they're careful, they do what they can, but the bottom line is, we got to remove that snow from the street so cars can get around, and like I say, today did a great job. Now, I've said this before, I'll say again, we could actually hire people to shovel every sidewalk, every driveway, we can cut everybody's grass, trim everyone's bushes, we can do that if they want to, if people are willing to pay it, we could, we could set that up for this community. That's not a problem. I don't think people want to pay that kind of property tax bills, but we could do it. But as you see, no town really does that, because it's not financially feasible. But our guys try to do the best job they can, you know, they don't do it on purpose when snow goes up by your house. I mean, they got to clear the streets, and they do a great job at that. And I know it's not fun, I shoved it into my driveway today, you know, it was, later on the day, it was getting wet and heavier.
At the end of the driveway.
Because it's kind of warming up.
You got to learn to do that in first, because you don't have any energy left by the time you get down there.
It was there. But our guys do a great job, and the same thing, I know certain people like to complain about the corners, they do the best they can, and they will try to do, minimize as much they can, but bottom line is, they got to move that snow off the street, and they try the best they can, so.
I agree.
And that's why it's good they explained to you what they go through. So, thank you. Trustee Listener?
No report.
Trustee Zarnik?
I just wanted to mention that the applications for the Zarnik Heffron scholarships are now online, and you can get them at zarnikgolf.com, and it's also on our village website. There are eight $1,000 awards to be given this year to Elk Grove's residents that will be graduating from high school. The applications must be received by April 23rd. It's a great way to try to start your college or your trade school work, to make it a little bit easier for yourself and maybe your parents. Try it. And that concludes my report.
And thank you, trustee Zarnik. Trustee Feiter?
No report.
Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie?
I was going to say, I just go through and throw snow off the grass onto the sidewalks over by Chris's house, but... No, I do appreciate that everybody does get out and clean off the sidewalks now, especially, a lot of people are walking on the street, I even noticed today, because the sidewalks haven't been shoveled, it's a little dangerous. So if you guys can get out and do it in front of your property, it'll really help. So I agree with Chris, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Still a lot of people walking from the COVID, they start in the summer, they're still walking in the winter time.
Yeah, well, you got to stay, fresh air is, you know, is pretty safe, so.
They're the happiest pets in Elk Grove, I'll tell you.
The dogs have been to heaven. They sure have.
They're going to have a breakdown once everybody goes back to work, I think.
Yeah, they'll need to see psychiatrists, doc psychiatrists.
Okay, move on now, accounts payable warrant for January 26, 2021?
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant for January 26, 2021, in the amount
Second. We motion by trustee Zarnik, same by trustee Listener. Lori, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prakno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Motion passed 6 to nothing. You know, I just noticed, no Paul Petzel?
No, and I told him about the committee of the whole too. I expected him to be there, not the committee of the whole, the JPZ meeting we had.
Hmm, and also...
A couple.
But you know what, maybe he didn't want to come out in that snow.
Yeah.
But also Helen, her husband on here.
Maybe they didn't want to come out in the snow.
Okay, hopefully everything's good. Okay, now, as we mentioned a few months ago, we had the longest consent agenda in the history of the village, back, I think it was during the summer, longest ever. Double digit letters, I think up to almost like QQ or something like that, I mean, it was bad. But this time tonight, we made up for it. Tonight, we literally have the shortest consent agenda in the history of the village, and it can't be beaten. Can't be any shorter, because then we wouldn't have one. There's nothing on it, you couldn't have one, so it doesn't count. This is the shortest. So Mr. Knickerbocker, tonight we have one item on our consent agenda. A as in...
Amazing.
Absent in honor of Mr. Petzel.
Oh. Absent, through A as in...
Absent in honor of Mr. Petzel.
Very good. So tonight we have consent agenda item A. Does anybody want to discuss it? We can actually read it, we can go through it if you want. I need a motion to approve it.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Frankie, a second by trustee Feiter, and if anyone says, if Mr. Rumel goes, can we remove item A to... And without objection, we record the vote, as previously demonstrated, 6 to nothing for item A on the consent agenda. No items on the regular agenda? Mr. Rumel, anything under the zoning plan commission? No finding fact for last night yet? Everything go through last night fine, Maggie? Okay? Zoning Board appealed nothing, Mr. Rumel? Okay, move on to youth committee. Trustee Frankie?
Thank you. The applications have been sent out to the three local schools for the youth committee scholarships. We're giving away seven $1,000 scholarships. The application deadline is Friday, May 7. Please don't wait till the last moment to send it in, you can start sending them in now. We will notify the winners approximately Friday, June 4th, depending on when we all can get together, depending on how COVID is and that, but around that date, we will be informing the winners. And hopefully, we'll be able to have the winners come to the board meeting this year, but we'll see how the summer goes. So please, you can download the application off the village website, or the Elk Grove Parks Foundation website, so get those applications in and get some money for school, that's all I have.
Very good. Business Leaders Forum, trustee Listener.
Thank you. Last Thursday, the 21st, there was a virtual informational meeting at Enclave to introduce some of the features of the Makers Wanted Workshop classes for 2021. There'll be another meeting this week, Thursday, the 28th. John Dellis is leading the meetings, and he did a phenomenal job at the last one, I hope to attend this one as well. And we're hoping to get a good class for the Makers Wanted Workshops in 2021, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Capitol Television Committee, trustee Listener.
Thank you again. The Elk Grove TV, working with the Police Department, Crime Prevention Division, produced a set of videos covering the ten DARE lessons for this year. Usually these lessons would be taught in person, but classroom visits are limited due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The students can watch safely in their classroom or at home connected with Zoom. I really have to commend the police and the Elk Grove TV for putting these DARE sessions together. I think it's really great that they're even able to hold them during these tough times, and we know it really helps these students in so many ways, and that concludes my report.
Yeah, DARE, there's something, I know a lot of towns gave up on DARE, and we put everything behind DARE, because it's so nice to have officers, Chuck, meeting the kids in a positive interaction instead of always negative, so I'm glad you found an innovative way to keep that out there, 'cause we strongly, makes a difference, maybe that's why Elk Grove does so well, 'cause young people grow up in a good environment with cooperation and partnership with it, so, very good. Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. At last Saturday's blood drive, thirty-seven units were collected, resulting in 111 lives being helped. Thank you to all that donated and participated. So now you can mark your calendars for the next village blood drive, that'll be held Saturday, April 3rd. I also wanted to mention that our respite program, A Caring Place, has not been able to meet due to COVID-19, but they have been doing Zoom meetings when able. Kenneth Young Center is offering a free nine-week class via Zoom to help caregivers manage their stress and learn the tools of self-care. For information, you can visit their website, kennethyoung.caregiversstressbustingdementia program, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Information Committee, trustee Listener.
Yeah, I just wanna remind everyone, Mayor, about our village website, it's always up to date, providing valuable information, especially with these vaccine appointments at the county and state and everyone else is putting out lately, it's a good place to stop and check, and if you can't access the website, EGTV does have a couple shows every day, almost every day, from, one's at 2:30 and one's at 6:00, it's called Elk Grove Update and Village News, and they give a lot of information about what's going on on the website as well. And lastly, we still have our village app, and I checked it myself today, and there's also updated village news on that, so we're offering a lot of places for people to check if they can take a few minutes, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Our Recycling and Waste Committee, trustee Fechter.
Our simple recycling plan, at least that's the official name for it, which is really our textile recycling program, is doing, it continues to do very well, 9,157 pounds of unused textiles were collected in the month of December, that's really good. I just wanted to clarify something, though, tonight, that I've been hearing from people about how that system works, 'cause some people, I think, are a little confused. It is not the job of our waste management people, our recycling truck, to pick up those bags, those orange bags, they don't do that. They notify a little, or not a little, but a van that works with this company, when they see that you have your orange bag out in front of your house. So when they see that, they notify them, the address, and then a short time, or maybe a few hours later, they will come by and collect it and leave another bag for you. So don't expect, I know some people are very upset, they seem to think, "Oh my gosh, they passed me by, I don't know why they did, I wanted to turn in this bag of textile." They don't do that, it's picked up by a separate, you know, truck, and they don't do it at the same time, they will notify them, and then they come by. The village will be trying to come out with publicity on that, so it's better understood by all the people, I can see why that mistake would be made. Don't forget, I think we have Christmas tree lights that still could be turned into the end of March, so if you have any of those, as you're taking them down, drop them off here at the village, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. Our parade meeting will be held Monday, February 1st, at 5:30 p.m. in Room E of the Zedek Municipal Building, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
No report.
Judiciary Planning and Zoning Committee, trustee Prackno.
Thank you. The JPZ Committee met this afternoon to discuss short-term rentals, basically Airbnb, whether they should be allowed in our community or not. Staff gave us some reports and some recommendations, and the committee will be going to the board with a recommendation on whether to approve this or not, and we will probably discuss this either at the next board meeting, or the meeting after that, and set up a committee of the whole, which will be open to the public, to make a recommendation and vote on approving or not approving short-term rentals within the community. Also, our next meeting of the JPZ Committee will be Tuesday, February 9th, we're, I'm not sure of the time yet, we'll get a timeout for you, we will be discussing the sale of recreational marijuana within our community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Capital Improvements Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Yes, there will be a Capital Improvements Committee meeting on Friday, January 29th, at 10 a.m. at the James P. Petri Public Works Facility, and that is gonna be to discuss the 2021 MFT Street Resurfacing Program, and that concludes my report.
It's a James Paul Petri.
No, it's Pete.
Oh, you had Paul in the new one.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, he changed it.
The old one was Pete.
Yeah, he wanted Paul.
Oh, that's right, I forgot, yes, I forgot, all right.
Very good. Okay, airport update, I've already discussed with JDA Contract, Midsummer Concert Classic Series, hopefully the President's Wrong, and we can inoculate enough that by July, so we can have Chris Daultrey, we can have Casey and Sunshine Band, Loverboy, and Beach Boys here for the Fourth of Jul, or for the summer concerts in July, so we're looking forward to, keep our fingers crossed that it happens. And who knows what may happen, something special, maybe we get through this pandemic, you never know. Okay, Special Events Committee, I guess the next one we talked about four will be Memorial Day.
Let's hope.
And keep our fingers crossed that can occur, and the next special events thing will be after that, okay. Liquor Commission, no report tonight, Mr. Manager, Ray Rommel, any report tonight?
No report.
No report, thank you. Our Village Clerk's got an announcement, early voting?
Well, it's a little premature, but yes, we are confirmed to have early voting here at the Village Hall, so early voting will begin March 22nd through April 5th, the hours will be posted on the website. And actually, I saw a note the other day, mail-in ballot applications are already available for them. Don't know anything about a ballot drop box yet, though.
So it's not too early, they're getting mail-in ballots out there, so that's good. Okay, thank you. Mr. Knickerbocker, take a look for me, any unfinished business on? Nothing there? Okay. Does anybody have any new business items? Anybody in the audience, we have a good crowd tonight, anybody in the audience wish to ask anything or bring anything up? Please, by all means, we've got all set up, for Ms. Murphy, we got the mic waiting for him, everything's good now? No one? George, got something you wanna add?
No, I don't.
Okay, congratulations, only fifty-one months, it'll be gone before you know it, no problem. Okay, no public comment tonight? Anything any board member wants to bring up tonight, anything new? Please note this, or the brevity of the meeting tonight, not bad?
I think you, uh, outdid yourself.
Keep moving, keep moving.
You outdid yourself, Mayor Johnson. Which was good.
You did good, very good. Okay, well, we, actually, two weeks from tonight, our next meeting's a holiday, so I'm not sure if we're gonna meet or not.
It says birthday.
It's an international holiday.
It's your birthday, right?
It's a universal, it's a celestial holiday, it's beyond belief, but what a better place, what a better place to spin that night than amongst the best people in the world.
I think we've all done it already, too.
So, okay, with that said, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, I keep looking for my stuff back here.
It's here, I like it back here.
It's nice there. I don't know how George is gonna sit on top of the garbage, but he's used to that. We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listener. Laurie, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prackno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Fechter?
Yes.
Before I adjourn, how does Mr. Rob get a Chair of Honor? And our clerk, there's one next to you, you gotta use one right there, Laurie, a Chair of Honor for you. Well, Tom? No, no, you're fine, you're good, we gotta test our new taser on someone, so it's perfect that you took it, so that's, that works out good.
It suits you well.
So, with that said, meeting is, we'll see you in two weeks, folks, adjourned.